We gotta go visit our kids.
Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting over, please rise from the floor. I clearly see the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, and everyone, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, welcome. Item three, any citizen that's honored to be heard. No one filed with anyone like the law. If you can't hear them none. Item, item four, consideration of possible action on minutes about 6:20, 25. Second, have a motion and second, any discussion on the minutes? Here none, all fair, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Let's see, if y'all don't mind, I'd like to move item five down. The guy with the plaque said he's stuck in traffic and he'll be here shortly.
Should we check about his mail first?
Yeah, we'll move it down. Alrighty, so let's skip down to item six. Consideration of possible action on FEMA hazard mitigation grant application for generators for the election board and Sheriff's Building, 219 South Broad, Guthrie, Oklahoma.
Chairman only.
Stephen, you wanna touch on this? They called and said they had extra funding or something?
Well, now, this is for bringing news, boy. This is, so, a while, well, a couple of years ago, now, we did the courthouse one and the paperwork, and then we also submitted to the one, you know, across the street to, um, we got approved for the courthouse one, and then we had to, because everything was old and outdated, we had to refile, because they opened up for mitigation grant stuff, so, got new quotes on the generator and then quotes from the electrician to...
And we're calling it for the election board. Is the generator large enough to do the whole building?
It will do the whole building, it'll be a natural gas one instead of a diesel.
So, on the last grant, did we get settled up on that?
With the government shutdown and everything, I haven't heard anything back yet.
The government shut down?
Yeah, they said, they said that, um, they got it and they have the extra money left over to help offset our costs from the courthouse one, so...
Well, what you guys wanna do?
What do you mean, I'm fine with...
Is that a motion?
Is there, is it 100% grant or?
Seventy-five, twenty-five. Took about a hundred and ten thousand total for that one, is probably what it came out to.
And if we get that one, the courthouse will have a generator, the sheriff's office will have a generator, the sheriff and ex will have a generator, this one will not.
They have to go ahead and pass it down, right?
Yeah. I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm in good motion that we approve the FEMA hazard mitigation grant application for a generator for the, I don't know what we're calling that, for election board. Any election board building?
I'll second Mark's motion. Have a motion and second, any discussion on this, Floyd? Mark, no. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Have a motion, your sweep, what you're up?
Yeah, just the chairman.
Item seven, consideration of possible action on reservation and settlement, 2025 longevity pay program for county employees.
So, this is the same program we've done for the last two years. The statute allows us to reward employees who stick around long enough to get some years of service. It ranges, you have to be here two years to qualify for the first level benefit. It is, the amounts are set by statute to a maximum, we are at 50% of that.
So, what's the maximum?
The maximum is $1,000 for 20 years or more of service.
$50 a year? And that's by statute, that's the maximum?
No, no, we're paying half of what...
The, the state, we could pay double that, we're at 50% of that.
Well, I'm saying is, I think when you're handing out longevity, it ought to be at least a hundred dollars a year. That's just, my opinion, I don't know what you're paying now.
With some years, you don't have enough to hand out anything.
Right.
So, so, the budget request that was submitted was based on this schedule, so the budget that's been approved, it's been based on this schedule. If you wanna consider a change to it, we'd need to look at that for the next budget.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so what is the 50% now? So, what is that?
So, the thousand, the state would be two.
Okay.
And then, when we developed, this is only the third year, okay, that it was. I received information from various counties. Quite a few of the counties that I did speak with are on the 50, and it's just a budgetary issue of feeling like, we feel pretty secure that we can fund it at 50. I think all of us would really hate to start this program and then have no money for it and have to say, well, this year, you're not getting it. So, I think that was that conservative line of saying, we're pretty sure we can keep this funded.
And I'd much rather get their health insurance paid than as to do this.
Right, well, that health insurance is another deal we need to have a discussion about, but...
Well, I make a motion, we approve the longevity pay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item eight, consideration of possible action on designating November 10, hang on, yeah, November 10, 2025 as County Employee Appreciation Day. County business hours being set for 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., allowing employees to attend to lunch. Boy, I guess this will be your first year at that, so every year, we try to have a County Appreciation Day for employees, we cook lunch, and, and normally, that's when we hand out the longevity pay checks and just recognize the employees for being there.
I'm all about it, I just cooked hamburgers for everybody last night.
We've been catering it, is what we've been doing.
So, what, so this is, we cook or we catered or?
Normally, we have a catering.
So, the law changed a couple of years ago to allow the county to pay for this type of, of stuff for the employees, so we catered the last couple of years using Ted's.
Well, I hope that wasn't illegal, I supplied the burger and stuff last week.
Ted's, you're fine.
You're fine on that, but anyway, we've, we've used Ted's, Ted's catered the last couple of years, we do it at the fairgrounds, um, and have the lunch, and then we, we don't re-own them, we give them the half day off, so...
I entertain a motion.
I move that we declare November 10, 2025 as County Employee Appreciation Day and have employees come attend to luncheon, and the counting hours of that day will be at 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m.
My second. Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution, removing surplus items from the assessor's office inventory.
This is various old computer equipment they've had in storage and want to move there.
I'm moving that we... Remove, what are they gonna do? Are they gonna come back and tell us what they did with it?
This stuff is all junk. Hard drives have been pulled, the units are junk.
So, you're gonna remove surplus items from the assessor's office?
She's already surplused them, they have them on loan interest.
Oh, okay. You make a motion, Mark?
I'll move to do that.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
I have nothing on 10 and 11.
No action on 10 or 11, let's get down to... Item 12, consideration of possible action on improvement on following permit, road crossing permits for the whole G and E. There are one and two. What do you guys say? You wanna approve this permit?
Where's it at? Southern Road 3 and 1/2 miles north of Chord River.
Point three five.
Hell, we have point three five.
Yeah, make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item 13, consideration of possible action on consent and due items. Payroll been first.
Where are you going?
Moving to state.
Got some to do, man, man.
Transfer? We have no transfer, I'm just trying to see, I think it's... Report.
I'll sign it anywhere you want. I'll sign it anywhere you want.
That will conclude consent.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
My second. I have a motion and a second on consent agenda items, any further discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. If the board don't mind, I'll go back to number five, consideration of possible action on final flat, our fifth side of the states and annual lots in the northeast quarter of 2616 and 12 west.
How are you?
Yeah, how are you? Better than I thought.
Oh, there's a flood plain in ministry here. Streets will not be maintained by the county.
Where do these at?
I'm sorry?
What crossroads?
Western and industrial.
Just a couple of miles out west of town.
One of those bridges, it's right there. Do we need to sign this one and the M I R?
Need to sign the two M I Rs.
Not this one.
I mean, we can do the paper ones too, we're just gonna record the M I Rs.
So, if you're not keeping them, why's that?
That's why the papers are just for us.
So, do you guys?
Sound, but, you know, here's... Can't go wrong with sound. If you don't like it.
Too...
I'm assuming you're saying...
There really isn't place for flood plain here.
On the one in industrial western? You have all nine, you have them sold?
Not yet.
I have, I ask everybody's.
I move to approve filing, final, creepson, stake. Manual lots in the northeast quarter of 2016, 123.
Sorry, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Yeah, good luck.
You get a little extra money, you wanna pave the road, that'd be sent to county road.
Okay, now, back over to the county clerk's office and get it recorded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Use what?
Item 14.
Glad you're here.
I'd like to give you a compliment for your reading, don't you?
What, what's wrong? You can give me a compliment, go ahead.
For the milk and meat.
My wife.
But it's the better part, I can do that.
I will get your thing here, thank you.
Lady wanna see it?
Item 14, discussion of possible action on improvement on payments for payment for October 2025. I move that we approve the claims. Sorry. I have a motion and a second on the claims, any further discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
By the way, have somebody who's 10 XL, I'd like to see that guy. That's pretty XL.
Item 15, discussion of possible action on improvement purchase card payment for October 2025. In the amount of $3,009.82.
Well, I move to approve first, of course. It's been...
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Here none, all fair, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. 16 comments and announcements pressing by both county commissioners or other county officials and departments. Hager?
Love nothing.
Floyd? Mark?
Oh.
No. Floyd?
Yeah, I wanna, uh, and I haven't, I haven't talked to Oklahoma County yet, but I lost an employee in Oklahoma County, I told y'all that last meeting, um, and, and the big deal was the insurance, so, I don't think they are through ACO. I think maybe Oklahoma County does their own thing. They do?
Your own thing.
So, I, I think that's something we need to look into, because you can't, and I'm not talking about Oklahoma County, or Logan County, just us, because I don't believe we would have enough.
Our health insurance doesn't go through ACO. It's through the state.
Well, whoever has it, it's ridiculous, when you go to adding your spouse or your children, I mean, these things, they can't do them.
I think, I think if you venture off from the state insurance, you're gonna have to venture off the state retirement as well.
Really?
Oklahoma County don't forget the state retirement, they got 401.
County program. We could stay in state retirement, if we leave the state insurance program, we have to take all of our retirees with us. They can no longer stay in the state's program. When we checked into this several years ago, there was a lot of pushback from the retirees who said, well, we're good, we don't wanna leave, and they would have no choice but to leave.
Right.
Um, I, I get that the dependent care is high, um, however, um, and, and there's probably other options out there, I don't know, not every county is stayed with the state, the majority have, um, that there's more to it than just switching.
Well, I understand that, it just seems to me like ACO, state, whoever, the more, um, the more folks you have in that program, obviously, the lower your, your premiums would be, but my goodness, how can it cost so much money to add your family members?
So, the thing we need to recognize with the state insurance program is health choice is actually the state-owned program, that they have, they open up for the other vendors, Blue Cross, Global, whatever, to contract with, so, and we allow the employees to choose which program that they want that's run through EGID. Health choice is the actual state-owned program, and then the others are contracted, so, you know.
Those other two, I'd say those other two, Tulsa County is like Oklahoma County, but they're so big and they have so much money, they can do things like that, when most of the other...
See, I didn't know, I didn't know what, what the situation was, and I hadn't, I tried to call and talk to, uh, Bill down there just to get some information before this meeting, and I couldn't get him to answer the phone, but, I mean, it just seems to me, it's ridiculous, we got people working just to pay insurance.
But the other thing you need to, to recognize, and I've had this discussion many times over the years, when I've had employees go, listen, sign on the telephone pole, says I'm buying insurance for $200. When you start getting into those low plans, you know how they offset that? Because the deductibles go clear up here.
Right, right, right.
And if you've got a fifteen or $20,000 a year deductible, that insurance is effectively doing you no good.
Exactly, exactly.
So, at least, you know, there's your offset, if you're going to make it where there's deduct, deductibles and total out-of-potits that are reasonable, the premiums are high. And you want lower premiums, you're gonna go to much larger deductibles and much larger out-of...
I'm, I'm not, I'm wanting low premiums on family members, I'm gonna tell you what I know about it, where I came from, my insurance deductibles were no different than they are now, with, with the insurance I have now, they were exactly the same. And the insurance, huh?
There was your...
Same, uh, Blue Cross, but the insurance was not this expensive, nowhere near, I mean, it, for my entire family, it would cost me $600 a month, probably.
And how much did the company pay of that? I mean, towards the...
Well, I don't know what they paid of it, I just know what I had to pay.
So, so...
I understand the county pays for the employees' insurance.
And, and you have to understand with Oklahoma County, that they are providing a benefit for dependents that we're not financially able to.
Right.
So, there's, it, it's not banking necessarily, I'm just saying, that the cost is different, it's different to the employee, because they have enough money to say, hey, we can put money towards dependents as well.
But, but what I'm, what I'm wanting to know is, or what I was gonna check with them, and... them and see how that was working and if it was something that we might be able to piggyback on, because normally, the more enrollees you have, the lower your rate goes.
But you're missing what I'm saying.
I'm not missing it.
What I'm saying is, if the premium is a thousand dollars a month, just for dependent coverage, and Oklahoma County is actually footing seven hundred dollars of that, so the employee is only paying three.
I realize that.
So, it may not, I don't know that the premiums are gonna necessarily be that different, it's the benefit that the county financially can provide.
Right, right, right.
Reach out and find out and bring...
Well, that's what I wanna do, I just wanna talk to them.
Bring numbers back and discuss it.
But if we do leave the system, we have to take retirements.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just think it's something that needs to be looked at because it's, I'm leaving the...
It is high. Everything's high.
That's all I have.
Alright, only thing I got, this is our last meeting here, our, our new location will be down on County Way, is it fourteen fourteen?
No. Under County Way, it's two zero one.
Two zero one County Way.
Or only known as fourteen fourteen South Division.
Is that gonna show up in, in Google Maps?
It will eventually, it's all been submitted and working its way up, um, post office has to change, the city is the one who submits it to ACO, but then it goes up from there, so...
So, our next meeting will be at two oh one County Way. Be at nine o'clock on the thirty-first. Next commission meeting, plus we have a special meeting. This is the last one here, we got a lot of history in here. I'd be glad to leave, Phil. That's all I have. Item seventeen, consideration of possible action on retirement. I don't like the motion. Second. Everybody say aye.